We're gonna have laughing chat going on. Good evening. Today is Wednesday, July 16th, 2025, and I'm calling to order the City of Oregon City's work session at a little after six. And let's have the roll call as we convene this fabulous meeting.
Commissioner Marl.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Mayor McGriff.
President. So we have one item on our agenda tonight for general business. It is discussion of Parks and Recreation Systems Development Charges, System Development Charge Methodology. And we have our two illustrious park director folks, Scott Archer, Director, Mr. Thomas Kissinger, Assistant Director. Take it away, unless Alex wants to say something, since she's in charge tonight. Congratulations. We'll try not to be too crazy.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Commission. Yes, this is, uh, walking through some, um, information about the Parks System Development Charges methodology that you requested previously. Um, at the June 18th regular city commission meeting, we presented the, um, the draft methodology for our updated Parks SDCs. And, um, there was, uh, discussion and then some direction from the commission to staff to, um, uh, to, um, basically, uh, bring you some additional information on two particular things. One is the, um, the amount that we have built into the methodology for the recreation and aquatic center, um, and whether you might want to consider reducing that amount, uh, which then in turn would reduce the, um, the SDC charge. And the second piece was, um, the multi-family unit rate. Um, you asked us to bring back some information on how that might be tiered, um, similarly to what we do with the single-family home rates. Um, and so that is what we're going to walk through this evening. Um, I will say also at the June 18th meeting, you, um, uh, you carried forward that item. You held a public hearing. So the public hearing requirement has been met, by the way. You don't have to hold another public hearing, but you did carry that item forward to today's meeting. Uh, you set it to a date certain of tonight. Um, and that is on your regular agenda. Um, the staff report is, is very vague because we wanted to, uh, first see what your, um, sense of direction might be with the work session. So we will, we'll have that conversation. And then when you get to that item on your regular agenda tonight, um, what we're going to ask is that you, you reset another date certain forward because what, depending on your conversation and the outcome and, and your updated direction, we're going to have to revise the methodology and that's going to take a little bit of time. So we'll, we'll talk through that with you a little bit. So if you, um, if you give us, um, definitive direction this evening on what you'd like to see, then we can bring that back to you in this, uh, by the second meeting in August. We've conferred with our consultant. They're gonna have to, as I said, they're gonna have to rewrite the methodology that was presented, and that's gonna take a little bit of time. So, um, if, if you're, uh, certain about what you want to do this evening, then August 20th will be the date that we'll be able to bring that back. If it's unclear, uh, and you still want to have further discussion, then I think we'll have to, uh, continue that, um, and perhaps find another, another work session or however you decide you want to proceed there. So just some of the procedural stuff. So to the, to the presentation, which really is, um, going to be mostly about those two items, we gave you the presentation last time. This, um, first piece is, is really the, the same thing that we've already presented, the objectives of the SDC, so we don't need to go into that. So here's the, the meat of the conversation. Slide one of two that really are the meat of this discussion. The first one here is the, um, the, the component about the recreation aquatic center that you asked to review. Um, so in the current draft SDC methodology, we have $9.1 million programmed into the, to the overall cost, which then determines that drives what the rates are. And so what you asked was to look at a couple of different things, perhaps something around a $5 million option. So basically cutting it nearly in half, and then a, a $0 option, which would eliminate that from the SDC methodology. So I'll get to the, um, what that means to the, to the bottom line of the fee in just a moment. That'll be on the next slide. But I, um, wanted to just note that that's the two, that's the two scenarios that we've developed, and that will then be reflected in the updated fees that, you know, that shows the reduction when you go to 5 million and then go to zero. Um, the thing we want to note here is, we have an estimated cost as of today, about four, at about $40 million for this future facility. Um, and this has, uh, been, you know, essentially, um, built in as part of that revenue source. There's gonna be obviously, uh, other revenue sources, whatever that ends up being, whether some kind of bond measure or, you know, perhaps other, other funding sources. So whatever we take out of this, we're gonna have to make that up in some other capacity. Um, so obviously, um, we know that. And I'm happy to go, I'm happy to pause if you want to have conversation about this piece, or I can present the other information, and then we can revisit if you'd like to do that. Okay, we'll do that. Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, did you want to? Okay. All right. So this slide is the, um, this shows the modified information with the residential change, which is at the bottom of the slide, the multi-family, um, which is anything above five units. Um, and then it, um, will, will, will show you how this pencils out with the change to multi-family, and then the change to the, um, recreation aquatic center. So, uh, first thing is what we, what we determined the path forward was, there were a couple of options that we were looking at. We consulted with our, um, our city leadership team, the city manager, the, um, the assistant city manager, the public works department, the planning department. Those are the other departments that are involved in, um, uh, the SDCs and the collection of SDCs. So their, their, their input was important. Um, and then, of course, with our consultant as well. And what was determined the best path forward would be is to view this as the number of bedrooms per unit. The other option was a square footage calculation per unit. Um, that would be extremely burdensome to calculate for the SDCs, um, when we go to collect them. It's also difficult to, um, to develop the methodology around that because it, there's, there's just so many variables with, with multi-family. So what we've come up with is, is a number of bedrooms per, um, living unit methodology, and that's where this, um, this chart shows you that. So on the bottom, and I don't think I can, we can't really move. There's no, nothing to toggle around or anything. Is there? Okay. Uh, no, just, just, I was thinking, uh, if I could mouse over some things, but I'll just, I'll just explain it and we'll, we'll make it work. Um, so again, what we're looking at is the bottom where it says multi-family greater than five units, um, zero to one bedrooms. And if you follow across that row to the right, where we're really at is the last three columns to the, to the right. So it says RAC nine million, RAC five million, RAC zero. Um, so from, for zero to one bedrooms, let, let me back up a second. In the existing draft methodology, I should note, um, oh, s- sorry, let me back up a little bit further. The single-family housing is still shown on here because the, um, the fee will, the rate will change with the change to the, um, to the recreation aquatic center. The rate is the same. We're not, we're not changing anything else. Uh, but the multi-family rate, um, we had in the, in the current draft methodology, which we showed you at the June 18th meeting, we had one rate only for, for multi-family, and that was $8,280. So just in comparison, these are all gonna be, um, relative to that, that, that number. So now back to this. So with the zero to one bedrooms, um, going across that row, uh, at the, at the full $9 million, you're looking at 4719 per unit. So that's a reduction down from 8280. Um, at the $5 million, uh, RAC, I'm just gonna abbreviate the recreation aquatic center, RAC is 4471, and at zero, it goes down to 4168. So, uh, that's with zero to one bedrooms. With two bedrooms, uh, per unit, you're looking at 7949, 7530, and $7,019. And then at the three-plus bedrooms, and this is where now we go above what was proposed before. So the three-plus bedrooms is actually going to be higher than, than the currently proposed rate of 8280. So then we're looking at $11,012, $10,433, and $9725. So what, what happens here is the, the methodology is still, is still calculated on all of the capital that we have built into the program, which means that the revenue is going to be neutral. So even though we're looking at a reduction in, uh, some of these rates with, um, lower number of bedrooms per unit. So there is, there is a tiering, but when you get to the three-plus bedrooms, it actually jumps above because the, the calculation is still, um, the full amount baked into that methodology. The only way to change that is to take, uh, is to take items out of the, out of the capital plan, um, which we haven't done, and I don't know if that's what, you know, what there is interest in doing. But, um, the only thing that's being reduced is the, the idea around the recreation aquatic center, um, and those, those three different tiers. Uh, under the single-family housing at the, the top half of that chart, we have, um, we have reducing amounts, but it, the starting rate at the original 9 million is still the same as what we presented. Then if you go to the next two columns to the right, it tiers down depending on either the 5 million or the zero. So I'm gonna pause there for a moment. Have a couple more slides that show some, some comparisons, which I know that you were interested in the last time, that, that reflects kind of an updated version of the comparison. But for a moment, I think I'll just pause here and see if you have a question for me or us now. If not, I'll just, I'll just move through the other slides and then we can, we can come back. Okay, great. So, um, this updates the, um, the comparative with other, other jurisdictions charging parks SDCs. Um, at the original $9 million, this is single-family only. We don't, we didn't show you last time a comparison with the multi-family, and we're not doing that again. Um, we would have to run so many different, different versions of that comparison. It would, it would be difficult to really to do that. I mean, we, we could do it, but it would be, um, it, it, I don't know that it would, it would be that helpful, honestly. So, um, but the, the single-family still gives you an idea of where we're at. So at the full 9 million with the aquatic center, um, we're, we're still kind of right in the middle. If you drop it down to zero, um, we're, we're still the next, the next one down. Um, if, if we went to the 5 million, we didn't put a $5 million, um, bar graph in there because it, um, it's just right in between those two. So we, we would be all three of those. So that's where we're at, um, with the comparative. Um, if you, let's see. Yeah. Oh, we've, we've got our, there's another Oregon city that's the fourth up from the bottom. That's our current rate, just to show you like where we're at now. And then if we, um, if we were to implement the fee as proposed, that's, that's what it brings us up to, is right in the middle of the, the comparison. This is, um, this is similar information that we presented last time. So these next couple of slides are really about the, um, the commercial rate or the office rate. Nothing has changed here, so there's not much to discuss. We charge, uh, a commercial rate. Our, um, our comparative, um, we've updated a little bit with the change to the, if we change the, uh, recreation aquatic center, um, if you look kind of in the middle, there's Oregon City, RAC nine, $9 million. That's where we were before. Uh, and then dropping down to 5 million puts us one step down from ourselves on the comparison. And then, um, going down to zero drops us down a couple more. We dropped below Sherwood on the comparison. So that just gives you an idea of what that does to the commercial rate. And then our last slide here is just a, kind of a follow-up piece from, it's the same thing we presented last time. So I'm gonna go back. I think I'm gonna park on this slide because I suspect that might be the one that you want to talk around. Um, so I think what we're looking for is direction on a couple of different things. First of all, um, what your, um, what your choice is, what direction you want to go with the recreation aquatic center. Again, currently it's at the proposed 9.1. Do you want to reduce that to either 5 million or zero? Uh, and then the, um, the multi-family tiered rate, um, the, the challenge with that, the only thi- I, I would say this, the, the only thing that's going to change that calculation is, is to change what's in the capital plan. So you'd have to have a conversation about if you wanted to, that to look like it's a even further reduction. The only way to do that is to, is to pull things out. So this kind of is what it is based on the, on the current capital plan. So with that, happy to answer any questions or have further conversation about this. I should mention too, I, I meant to mention this beginning, um, our consultant, um, who really is truly the expert, uh, was unable to come tonight. The date certain you had set didn't, didn't work with their schedule, but, uh, they may be willing or able to come back to a future session if there's further detailed conversation around this that you want to get into.
Any thoughts, gentlemen? Go ahead.
Thank you, uh, and thank you for the presentation. Um, I really appreciate, uh, that Commissioner Mitchell brought this up at the last meeting. I know that this is something that I've been, this is a direction that I've been wanting us to go for all of our SDCs for a while now, and I, I hope that we continue trending in that direction, recognizing, um, the different costs that are being incurred, uh, when it's a larger versus a smaller unit. And so I'm glad to see us going in this direction. Um, and with that being said, uh, going back to the original discussion we had on this, talking about balancing the needs for housing versus the needs for, uh, communities that have sustainable parks investments that are being made. Um, and we do have to remember that every fee that we pass on to developers are, are not accepted into their budgets out of the goodness of their hearts. They are passed on, uh, to whoever is going to inhabit. is going to inhabit those residences. And so I've gone back and forth on this a lot. I do want to keep moving forward with the tiered approach, but as it relates to the Recreation and Aquatic Center, I'm either leaning toward the $5 million or the zero because for a project of that scale, to speculate on when we would be able to collect that many SDCs to cover $9 million of an estimated project, we don't know when that will happen. We don't know what the market is going to bring in terms of housing development in this city. And I really think that it needs to be more of an all or nothing approach if we were to go out for a bond and say that if you do pass this bond, you will get a Recreation and Aquatic Center versus if we pass this, we don't know how long in the future it will take for us to accrue those SDCs, and by that time, how much more expensive it will probably be to build it in the first place. So that's where I am right now.
I'm looking right.
Excuse me, I think I agree with that. I wouldn't like, I would not like to take anything out of the current plan, even though, I, so as long, and I think the justification that we see here on this table is fine.
I'm going left.
Lots of stuff bouncing around in my head. First off, I guess, I'm a little surprised that there's not much impact of whether the $9 million is in there or if it's zero. I mean, it's, you know, on a, you know, 2,400 square foot house, let's say, or 2,200, whatever, it's $1,400. Okay, so, yeah, $1,400, but it's not as dramatic as I thought it might have been, which I guess makes me more concerned about what Commissioner Marl just brought up, is, I mean, how long would it take us to generate $9 million in SDCs? And that's not an answerable question because we don't know how fast development's going to go. If it stays like it is presently, we'll never get there. Not never, but a long time. The other thing, and I don't think it's necessarily bad, but on the multifamily one, there's a huge difference going from zero to one up to two, and then from two up to three. And that percentage increase is a whole lot more than rents go up. I did a little research today, and the average rent in Oregon City, a one-bedroom is about 17% more than a studio, a two-bedroom is about 16% more than a one-bedroom, and then a three-bedroom jumps up, it's 37% higher than a two-bedroom. And these percentage-wise jump up a lot more than that, which, I don't know if that's good or bad, or it's, I mean, I see the rationale was just based on the average number of occupants, right? That's why, that's where the increase came from, is...
That's exactly right. Yeah, there's a fairly complex formula that's used that kind of drives that. So it's not quite apples to apples, but yeah, I hear what you're saying about the rent.
And it does make smaller units, and actually, the SDCs, whichever column we end up in, are going to go down compared to what they are now, which is not all bad either, if we're looking for more affordable housing. I know we'd all like to have more ownership opportunities, but at least in multifamily, the cost of doing smaller units would go down. So I don't know where to land on that, on the zero or $5 million or $9 million, but I really think my decision or my thought is more along the lines of what Commissioner Marl just brought up. You know, how long would we have to wait to collect that $9 million? That's the question.
If I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt that. EFMA on that, so there's a couple of different ways to look at that. You can either just, you know, wait until the amount is collected and then utilize it. There's also the opportunity with financing, you know, that you can, there's options like revenue bonds to sort of borrow against the future revenue that you're going to be collecting and things like that. It's still speculative, and when that money's going to come in, and if that's even worth that, you know, that risk, but there is the option to explore at some point down the road that if that's baked into, if there's some amount of that facility's baked in, there's some financing things you can do to get creative, to spend that money before you've actually got it, but it's, you know, then you get into interest, you're going to pay some interest rates on that. But I think that's partly what some of these types of things are about, is forward-looking, that you're going to have that revenue so you can borrow against it. That's not a decision that gets made in the SDC methodology, that's a decision that we get to make down the road if we wanted to go there. So just to make sure that that's on the table to understand.
And so that kind of finance decision, is that something that would also have to go to a vote of the people, or is that...
Revenue bonds. I don't think the revenue bonds does.
Yeah, I'm not sure whether a revenue bond would have to. A general obligation bond, which probably is what we're looking at, you know, potentially for the rest of that amount, is definitely voter-approved. I don't know that the city has a requirement for revenue bonds. Do you know of anything, Carrie?
I don't know, I would have to look. I don't know. Alex?
And I don't know that it makes that much difference, but...
Are you aware of anything? I know when we've done it in the past, I don't believe that there was any vote, it was city commission at the time made that decision, so. Thoughts?
So you actually answered one of the questions I was going to ask, was, because I'm looking at the price differences, for me, I'm not against keeping the $9 million in there because I would like to be able to go out with an ask that is lower than the full amount, if we can do that. But my question was, again, is there a way that we could use that future revenue to, again, have a separate, you know, revenue bond, whatever? So my second question is, you know, I know that there's this, we don't know how long it would take us to potentially collect $9 million. There's no way of predicting the future, but based on current housing trends, looking at the last few years, like, if things were to remain similar, do we know how long roughly that would take?
We haven't done that calculation, but I will say that we have approximately $7.5 million to $8 million in our SDC account today, so to raise an additional $9 million would basically be doubling it. I'd have to go back and look at how long it took to accrue that current balance, but that's certainly something we can bring.
Long time.
Yeah. I mean, the last time this was updated was 2000.
Realistically, we would be looking at...
Okay, well, I'm looking at this from the standpoint of, I was looking at the SDC collection as sort of money in the bank, that we wouldn't use it, so to speak, to offset a bond. We would use it to leverage the bond in a way, even though I know that it's going to take a while. I mean, with the rate we have now, I would have to say it's probably taken us over 10 years to collect what we have now, and probably even more than that, just thinking back past history. So to me, the collection of the $9 million, there is, when I saw this, there wasn't that much difference between that and the five. So I'm thinking, let's bank all that, use some of it, but whether we go out for a levy, a bond, or whatever it is, I see the SDCs as not balancing it, or saying if we have X SDC, then we only have to raise X. I'm thinking we go for the bond for the, you know, after we do value engineering and everything, and we look at all the costs and everything, we have that number, and then the SDCs, to me, is the icing on the cake. I don't foresee that we would be waiting to collect all that before we do anything. I think we need to do something sooner than later. So I definitely don't go with the zero. I'm not supporting zero at all. I don't think that that gets us anywhere. I don't have any problem with the nine because I'm not looking at it as we have $9 million and then we need to raise $9 million to balance that for the Recreation Center. We go, you know, we say that it's $40 million, $45 million, you know, we go out for the levy, bond, whatever it is, for that amount. And there just wasn't that much of a difference that I could see that, you know, offsets it. And we're not, you know, we're not spending down that money, like, you know, we're going to spend the $7 million, you know, now, between now and, you know, let's say, two to three years. I mean, it would be lovely if we could get this thing going within the next two to three years, but there's a lot of work that has to go into a bond, a levy, whatever we're going to do to get the information correct, get the right message to the voters, even though they all want it, you know, when it comes time to open the wallet, we have to wait and see how that goes.
The other thing about that $9 million is we have a lot of other SDC-qualified projects that we'd like to be able to spend money on too.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. Yeah, so I'm saying the $7 million is not going to sit there, we're going to be using it for this, that, or, you know, but we're not going to spend it down. So we'll have some, you know, we'll have some money in the quote-unquote "in the SDC bank," so to speak. So I guess I will ask the question just by consensus, do we have any, does anybody want to say that they would support zero? Because if we don't have that, then we're down to the other two, and we can give staff a clearer direction. Okay, I don't hear any votes for, or, excuse me, I don't use the word vote, I don't hear any comments for or against zero, so let's move to between five and nine. And, you know, the other thing you mentioned that also concerned me a little bit, I appreciate your comment about you want to keep stuff that we have in the plan, so I'm just concerned too about, you know, in your estimation, what type of work are we going to have to do to the master plan? Is it just that particular section? We don't have to go back in and revise anything else if we don't want anything else changed?
Yeah, essentially, it does change the whole calculation.
Well, but just the numbers part, but we're not talking about projects or anything like that.
Right, we wouldn't touch the rest of the capital. The other piece of this, the calculations around the multifamily tiering is part of that methodology, it has to be revised, so that's the piece, yeah. But no, we wouldn't touch any of the other proposed capital planning, that's what the whole methodology is essentially calculated around.
That's, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that was very clear, that we weren't planning on doing that. So do we have any appetite for five?
That's where I would prefer to be.
We're just voicing our opinion, we are not making a decision. We will talk about that at the next meeting.
I'm leaning toward nine.
Okay.
Mostly because how small the difference is between the two, and what we could do with that additional $4 million.
I tend to agree with you because I couldn't, you know, even just doing the math in my head.
For me, it isn't so much the difference between the two, it's the increased speculation on our end as to when we would actually get that amount, and with everything that we have been going through the last couple of years, and the rate of inflation, this doesn't, I'm sure, account for that either. And so that's why I would prefer to meet somewhere in the middle, because I do believe that this ought to be something funded in part by SDCs, because the reason why we're in the position where we are now with our current facility is because of the growth of our city in addition to the aging of the facility itself. But it does get a lot of use by new residents, so I do believe that we should be investing SDC dollars into it. But I think that when we go out to the voters and we say, instead of taking this project completely out of the equation for when we say this is what you will get in return, it becomes a lot less attractive in my eyes for what voters are actually going to see, if it's something like a Recreation and Aquatic Center versus we're going to repave some paths and we're going to make sure that some of these things are more up to date. I don't think that's attractive to voters in comparison to a large project if we were to go with either the five or the zero.
They get some of that, but you have to remember, over the last decade, our SDCs for parks have been super low, which is why it's taken us so long to collect. They just never got updated, and that's, and that's a big issue.
I understand that, yeah.
So what do you think?
I would support staying at the nine.
Okay, Rocky?
Well, I'm good in between five and nine, but...
We have to give staff some kind of direction.
If we don't put something in front of our voters that's tangible, it's going to make it a lot more difficult for us to get their approval, because we just went through it with the transportation package that failed. This was solely an operations and maintenance type of session that they wanted to go through because that's what they needed to address, and because they weren't addressing a lot of the bigger ticket items that people have been promised, it fell through. And that's what I worry about this, is that if we don't have a big-ticket item that we can show to voters that a yes vote equals this...
I agree with you, but I'm missing how, how does that happen at zero but not happen at $9 million?
Because if we were to go out for the full amount and say that we can do this right now with the funds that we get through this, as opposed to hoping that we get the $9 million 10 years, 15 years out, when inflation has gone up as well, that's where I have a hard time saying, voters trust us with this.
Yeah, and see, I can't make the connection between what you said. In my mind, this is an offset, this is not, again, as you mentioned earlier, we've got money in the SDC fund that we have, this project, that project, that project, that we need to apply that to, and some of that $9 million is going to go to some of those projects as well. We hope that, you know, whatever it is we collect, we can use some of that as leverage for the larger amount. And if we go out and say, if you approve X amount, this is exactly what you're going to get, but we also have some other money set aside that we might be able to get something additional, like fixing the things around you, or wherever, adding this or adding that, you know, we've got people, you know, what's happening to phase two of this particular project, what's happening to this project, what's happening to this project? So I don't know. So you already said where you are, I'm, you're saying between nine and five, did. I don't know if that helps them. So I'm going to stick with nine right now, so.
Well, there you go.
We kind of have a five and a five and a half, because you're...
Are you throwing a seven, or are you...
Are we throwing out numbers here to drive them crazy?
No, I'm counting three nines. Saying, there you go.
It's not a vote, it's just a consensus.
Well, I know that, but that's, I'm good with either one. I wouldn't know whether I would settle on either one at the moment, but...
Yeah, that's what I said, you said nine, and nine, somewhere nine and five.
So you wouldn't be patently against that?
No.
Can I?
Yes, please.
One thought, and it kind of ties in with what Commissioner Marl just said, and maybe I'm going too far down...
The rabbit hole?
Political road. But there are individuals in our community that think that new development does not pay its own way. So I see a little bit of a political advantage to be able to say that, because it sure doesn't, that X percent of our aquatic center funding is coming from new development.
Right, some SDCs.
As opposed to new development not paying anything into a new facility. So I see a little bit of a political advantage, you know, when we have to make the big ask.
I've heard that many a time, and I will be honest with you, from my profession, looking at everything that we support in this community, new development doesn't pay its way. There's always those additional costs that it would be, so, give you an example, it would be frustrating to me when we'd ask for the departments to say, what is the impact of this blah 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 on your department? And we'd get no impact. Well, we knew that wasn't true, we knew that that wasn't true, we knew that there was going to be an impact from fire, there's going to be an impact from police, there's going to be an impact from public works and roads and everything, and that does not, in any way, those costs that we charge for SDCs, doesn't even come close to covering that. Every time we have a new development or a new area come into the city, it's just one more area that our facilities and services have to cover with a deficit. And there's no way that new development will ever pay its full freight, it just isn't in the equation.
So I agree with that, and I want to make sure that new development is paying its fair share.
Fair share, yes.
But if we... But if we go with the five, that just means that the, the funds that we're going to be taking in through SDCs are going to fund other things that are also their fair share to pay for, it's just that it isn't going to be going toward this project, and it'll go to other things. So it's not as though we're changing the amount that we're actually collecting, it's what, what amount that we're, what, what are we diverting?
Right.
Is what I'm saying.
So what, in your opinion, so let's say we have $100 in SDCs, and that's gonna fund a whole bunch of stuff. We have the existing things that we need to cover, and let's say, a small portion of that, just hypothetically, would we set aside 20% of that $100, 5% of that $100 to go to some big project like a Recreation Aquatic Center? Or actually, you had in your report, you had aquatic, and I said, okay, well, that doesn't spell RAC, that's A, RC, ARC, which I don't know if we want to have that be the initials of it, but, so there's some percentage that we would, I would say to a constituent, this amount of what we've already collected is gonna go to help offset, you know, and it's, I'm not asking you to give a hard and fast number, I'm just saying, that's something we need to be aware of with the current SDCs that we currently have. You know, we could say seven million, and oh, three million of that seven million's gonna go towards the aquatic center. I don't know. I'm just, I'm asking sort of a big question that doesn't really have an answer. And we could say whatever, and then a future City Commission would go, no, we don't want to do that, we want to do something different. He's carrying the one. That's okay, I was going, I could see, I could see you're going five, carry the one, move that over, subtract that.
We're looking back at our, we're looking back at the presentation information from the last, the last meeting that we talked about this, and I think we're, we've roughly got, I think around $145 million worth of capital in the, in the SDC plan. So if currently that nine million dollars is part of that 145-ish, what did I say? Yeah, 145, these are rough numbers. So the percentage, you know, would be that, and whatever, whatever nine million is of, of 145. I think that's what you're asking me.
Yes, that, that sort of makes sense, yeah. I'm not holding it, holding it to that number, I'm just saying that...
Yeah. Standby.
I can, I can do the math, that...
It's roughly 6% of that total, but so the, the nine million currently proposed is about 6% of the total capital plan for the whole SDC.
SDCs, okay.
Yeah. Thanks.
Is that all you need?
Yeah, and, and so what, I think what we'd be looking for, thank you for the conversation, and the direction, well, the not official direction of the conversation, and hopefully in the open session in a little while, on this topic, we would get something that's a little bit more formal direction, to bring that back to you on a, on a date certain. I think at this point, if you're, if you're pretty comfortable around where, where you're thinking, then you could set that date certain for August 20th, that would give us time to work with a consultant to redraft the methodology and, and present it for your consideration.
We have to do that at the next version.
Yeah.
So we'll, yeah, we can do that.
In the regular meeting, and, and that will, that will be our direction then, at that point, if you give that in the, in the regular meeting, to bring something back to you, that you can vote on.
All right.
And, and this is presuming, I, I think it, it sounds like you're good with the, the bedroom, you know, per bedroom, per unit, so that, and that calculation kind of is what it is, if that's the rate, the way we want to go there, so it's very clear.
I think we all, all appreciated the breakouts, it, it makes it a lot clearer.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay. All right, being no further business, we are adjourned.
Before we adjourn, I should have brought this up at our last work session, and I apologize that I didn't think about it, when we were talking about other topics that needed to be added to future sessions, and discussing financing is what made me think of it again. When we just had our budget discussion, we had a very brief discussion about potential sources of revenue to help offset the fact that we have so much property in Oregon City that's not on the tax rolls.
Yep.
And I don't want us to wait two years and come around to the next budget and think, gee, we need to try to figure something out. So I'm asking that, a work session topic, to explore potential funding options, other than property tax.
Well, I am certainly willing to have that discussion. I will say that in my tenure in the City of Oregon City, as a resident and as a staff person, we had that discussion about nonprofit property, which is a big one, and the county. And we ended up going into what I would call a big circle, because nobody had the political will to say. And I know that it's been asked informally, under previous administrations at the county, and we got, ha, 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 ha.
We don't ask.
So, anyway, all right. Do you have that, Alex? Okay, all right. Being no further business, we are adjourned until 7 o'clock.